I'd like to welcome you all to the Atwater City Council Meeting for May 8th. We are going to start our session tonight with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mr. Ambries, since he's so well dressed tonight.
Let us pray. Father, as we come into this chambers to do the business, city of Atwater, we ask that you'll watch over each and everyone here. We thank you for the kids that are here to be honored, Father, for the parents. We thank you for the officer and dispatchers that will be honored tonight and sworn in, Father. We thank you for our chief, both of the fire and police departments, for all those that protect our great city, both fire and police, Father, and we ask that you'll watch over them and keep them safe. We thank you for those who set upon this dais. We ask that you will watch over them and keep them safe, Father. As we do the business, we ask that all things will be done in decency and order, and that you'll keep all those here safe as they travel home. We thank you, Father, for this beautiful city and for all that you've given us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Ambries?
Here.
Button?
Yes.
Kale?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any subsequent need items?
Mayor, there are none.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda as posted?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ambries, second by Button, Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our first item tonight is a certificate of recognition for youth from Atwater High School who are recognized by the Directing Change Program. We're gonna watch a video, hopefully, and then council member is going, council member Ambries is going to present certificates for their, Atwater High School students for their artistic achievements and mental health and suicide prevention in the Directing Change Program. Show the video first.
Before we do the video, I just wanted to say a couple of things. So this, this competition was open statewide, and the three individuals who are gonna be recognized tonight, they won, or they tied for third place in Region Four. Region Four consisted of counties such as Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, Monterey, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, San Francisco, Fresno, Madera, Merced, and a few others. If you notice, there's some big counties there that we know that, you know, their schools, their school districts make a lot more money than what we have here in Atwater. But yet, our students performed very well to get into the top three spots there. So I just wanted to say that before we watch the videos, before we watch the video and I head down.
I'm fine. At least that's what you thought, because that's all I would say. But I wasn't fine. I didn't know how to explain what was happening, so I hid it. But it became too much, so I distanced myself. I couldn't sleep. I'd break down when I was alone. I got angry over the little things. Eventually, everything ended. Everything was gone. I was gone. That is, until you saved me. You noticed the signs, so I guess all I could say is, thank you.
We'll improvise a little bit here. All right. So that was a quick video, but between their, their hard work, again, they, hold on, it's kind of a, so they shed light on an important, on the suicide prevention. Their hard work and dedication paid off, earning them, again, a well-deserved third place in that regional competition. So with that being said, I just want to go ahead and call forward the following. Michelle Gregory. All right, and I apologize if I slaughter this one here. Shakira Davalos? Davalos? And Devin Garcia. Again, we always recognize those who do, who go above and beyond, as well as those who set records for school sports and so forth, but I haven't, in, in the four and a half years that I've been here, seen anyone get recognized for what these three students here did. So, once this information was shared with me, I got ahold of the city manager, and right away, this is what I wanted to do, recognize you guys. I apologize that I'm just as nervous as you guys probably are, but I even tried to dress a little bit nice just for you three, so. So again, thank you guys for shining the light on this. It is a very important subject, and, parents, if you've got 15 seconds, now's the perfect opportunity to take pictures. You can go ahead and give them a round of applause.
Congratulations, you did a great job there. That was a very sobering video. You notice there was nobody talking during that. Our next recognition is for Buhat Colony High School. Councilmember Kale is going to present certificates of recognition to the CCC student athletes and the athletic director for their achievements.
I, one of the, one of the very things you should, uh, you know, Ambries, that level of office, what, even better than you actually, that, that, it should be shared in today's society greatly, and, uh, I invite you all to do work like that. So, I'm actually completely telling, uh, Atwater High School. And so, next, today we're doing Buhat Colony, and first we're gonna do, uh, a vote, right?
Excellent. Better? Oh, good. I don't have a loud voice. So, we're gonna bring out Adeline Barosso. She was third place, uh, with, uh, her CCC match, is she here? Adeline? No? Okay, we'll get, is your wrestling coach here? Girl's wrestling coach here? Oh, good. How about Sophia Romero? She's not here either, okay? How about Carla Estrada? Are they wrestling with each other at some place? Okay, that's good, that's a good thing. Adeline Ramirez? Najee Russo? Uh, great. Congratulations. Weren't you up here last year? Okay, so you, you're a pro at this, and, uh, Najee was running first place in the CCC with a 22 team points, that's awesome. How about Iris Reyes? Not here. Okay? How about Joanna Lopez Fadila? Not here. Let's also, uh, Najee. Coach, wanna say something?
So, we'll let Najee stand here a little more, just because I would like to mention that this young lady has made history at the given school that she's still at. So she's the first female wrestler to place, not only once, but multiple times at the state level. So again, she has made history there, and she is a grand image to our program. She inspires her other teammates. I'm not sure why they're not here, but hey, Najee's a senior, and she's here, so if you can all give her another hand, we're proud of her.
Great job on the rest of the team. All right, now we're gonna go to girls varsity soccer. Is your coach here? All right, coach, come on up, good. So, in the CCC this year, Sophia Alcon, the second team. Kaylee Howard, second team.
Congratulations.
Addison Sanchez, first team. Mia Howard. Mia was also first team and then the offensive player of the year, right? How many girls did you score? A lot. There you go, it's good, yeah. Sorry, shouldn't ask you that question. Lena Leemus.
Congratulations, everybody.
And this is your, uh, Buhat Colony High School girls varsity soccer team. Coach, wanna say something?
Uh, first, I wanna say thank you to the city of Atwater, mayor, city manager, and council members for recognizing these student athletes. On behalf of them, I'm sure they greatly appreciate you guys recognizing them. These girls had an outstanding season. I could stand up here probably all day and speak on behalf of every one of them, but one thing I think is super important is that they are students first and athletes second, and each and every one of them also received the CCC All Academic Award, which was recognizing them for their 4.0 or higher GPA during the season, so. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, girls, ladies. Congratulations. Great job. How about the Buhat Colony High School brace basketball? Coach, is, is he here? Okay. Do you wanna come up and speak on him? All right. He, uh, I think, uh, just lost his name, too. He, this is the athletic director from Buhat Colony, and we're gonna honor Ethan Emery. Is Ethan here? Uh, this is Ethan, they want to tell us a little bit about the program in Ethan.
Yeah, Ethan, um, our basketball program didn't have quite the success that they expected, but Ethan was one of those, those grinders. I know Coach Mu and selection of the all-league process, he has a high standard as far as recognizing student athletes with high character, team comes-first mentality, so Ethan represented all those things.
Great, thank you. And you wanna tell us your name?
Yes. So my name's Kevin Avar, I'm the athletic director of Buhat Colony High School. Like, like Coach Howard had stated, I appreciate the city of Atwater for recognizing our student athletes. Right now, currently in our district, the athletic directors are putting numbers together, and it's actually amazing to see. We're a population of 1,700 students, and if you just looked at roster spots alone, this season alone, we were about 864 roster spots. So I think when you look at, you know, kids getting involved in things, being active in school, just like Coach mentioned, I think there's a motivating factor because there's a minimum requirement for GPA. Obviously athletics, over the years, has contributed, like many people sitting up here that have been part of that. Just like I said, I wanna thank the city of Atwater and thank our student athletes for the work you guys have done.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, if you'll just bear with us, we have two more presentations to make, and then I'll let you go. How's that? So our next recognition is Oath of Office for Police Officer Levi Crane, Crane, and Public Dispatcher Trainee Anna Reyes. That will be done by our city clerk, Cory Billings. Come on up, Levi. Come on up here.
Do you, Anna Reyes, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter.
Wait a minute. I want to introduce to the community Anna Reyes. She's our newest dispatcher trainee. She starts tonight, so, yeah, we go from the frying pan to the fire. Anna comes to us from the Livingston area, I believe she still lives here in the Atwater area. We are happy to have her. She is one of, she's the future. She's just another step in our progression as we continue to build out to the department. It's, it's nice to see young people get into this line of work. It's not an easy line of work by any stretch of the imagination, and what I'm hoping is, is you young ladies right here that are athletes, consider law enforcement and the law enforcement profession as a choice. It pays really, really well, and we need more of you like her in our business. So, with that, I congratulate you, welcome aboard, can't wait to have you, get started, and we wish you all the best.
Do you, Levi Crane, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Lieutenant? Uh, yeah, no risk here, don't stick him. Thank you, Lieutenant. Well, I guess all good things come around. Eventually, they, they always come home. Levi was a police officer here in the city of Atwater about, what, six, seven, eight years ago? Yeah, 2014 through 2018, 17? And then we lost him to the city of Merced, and we lost him to the county of Stanislas, and then he got his brains back and reinstalled, and, and we, and we got him home. So, we welcome Levi. He couldn't have come at a better time in the department, as I've been very public about, we do have six openings, and we're looking for both our future, and he fills a very, very special hole in our department. We're really light in that seven to 15-year range, and we're looking for his experience and his expertise to come back to the city of Atwater and really do our community well. And if you're driving now, you need to slow down, because he's our motor officer, and he'll be out there waiting for you, especially around Buhat Colony High School. So, we welcome Levi, welcome aboard, good luck to you, and thank you. Congratulations, Levi. Honor also. So our next proclamation is for National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th, and National Police Week, which is the 15th through the 21st of this year. I will be coming down and making a presentation to the chief, and Janelle will be reading what's on the proclamation. I'm gonna take a brief pause, for, for those folks that wanna leave, you're welcome to go, we'll just take a brief pause while you do that. So you don't have to... I've lost my audience. How you doing? Okay, getting back on track. Janelle, will you please read the proclamation?
Yes. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the city of Atwater Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the city of Atwater Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency that unceasingly provides a vital public service, and now therefore, Mike Nelson, mayor of the city of Atwater, call upon all citizens of the city of Atwater and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2023, as Police Week with appropriate observances in which our community may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the city of Atwater to observe May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of duty.
Thank you, Janelle. I wanna say, this really kinda hit home, hearing this, it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. I had the pleasure of going on a ride-along on Friday night, Cinco de Mayo, and with Lieutenant Nowetski and Sergeant Ken Lee, it was quite an eye-opening experience. I saw a lot of parts of Atwater that I don't normally see, especially in the evening. And, uh, one thing that I was really thrilled to hear, since I'm really big on traffic enforcement, was constantly on the radio, I kept hearing, "Traffic stop, traffic stop, traffic stop." So they are out there looking for things, and now I know what they're looking for, so I tried to avoid, I tried to avoid that. But anyway, I would encourage people that live here to ask to go on a ride-along. You will, you will learn things about what goes on and things that you think aren't happening, they probably are, you're just at home, so. Mike, congratulations on that, and your department, very well, appreciate your efforts.
I'll, I'll be brief. I'm not standing here if it wasn't for the 22 men and women that are sworn and the 11 non-sworn members of my department. They're the ones that deserve this. They are the heart and soul of the police department, they are dedicated, hard-working individuals that I've grown to both admire and to love as colleagues. It's my pleasure to lead them, it's my privilege to lead them, and they bring it every single day. And, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. Their, their sacrifices don't go unnoticed.
that, I'm eternally grateful. Their sacrifices don't go unnoticed by me, the chief. And this, this particular week is very, very special coming up. The profession has taken a lot of hits over the last three years, and some of them probably warranted, some of them not so much. And with that, we will face the challenges of that in the future. And what I'm trying to do here is build a police department that you can all be proud of. And I am eternally grateful for your support. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out. I do appreciate that. Our guys appreciate that. And any person in this audience that would like to come out and take a ride along, I know some of you have. Things are definitely different. The technology and some of the things that we're doing are mind-blowing. The district attorney could talk about that because that's one of our items. So thank you again. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Janelle?
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, the item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
I am going to open public comment now regarding the consent calendar. Are there any members of the public inside the chambers who would like to speak regarding any items on the consent calendar? If so, please come to the podium now. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you make, can you check, make sure the switch is turned on there? I can't tell. Corey will check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that today was mental health for children at Atwater High. I attended that school. I also was very discriminated in that school. My mental health was not their priority. They looked at me as a transgender child that thought that they could get away with anything. They put me on the back burner. They made me use a porter potty. They made me, they made me a mockery. And through that, I developed a lot of trauma. I had a lot to say, but it's too little time to say it. But the way that the police department conducts themselves with intimidation and little to no knowledge of what's going on or what's being said to their lieutenant, sergeant, their chief, they need more mental health training. They need to learn how to speak to people. If they want respect, they should ask for respect. As, as a transgender woman, I am so afraid to leave my home, to be targeted, and, and I don't have not one ounce of this department of trust. I don't trust this department. There's been an ongoing investigation. It is humiliating that this has been going on for so long, and no one does anything about it. And I was told by someone in this room, I don't want to say his name, that coming here wasn't going to be doing anything different. And that, you know, the whole mental health system that this person put in place where he was before couldn't do it here. I want to know why. I would love for people to be more open. I get it. If you don't understand being transgender or having a transgender child, would you want your child ridiculed and try to commit suicide like I did plenty of times? I mean, I had a trigger response from Officer like a week ago, and I went completely numb. And they don't talk about every single thing. They just look at, or drug addicts. What made you a drug addict? Were you molested? Were you beaten? Were you discriminated? Were you this and or so? But I guess I'll come next.
Okay.
Speak more.
Okay. So you had your three minutes. Thank you for bringing that to us. If you will get ahold of the city manager, you can talk to her about what's going on because we didn't want to get into specifics. I know you don't want to get into specifics here.
No, that's why I didn't say any.
Right, exactly. So, but we will, you know, we take these things seriously.
I mean, it's been over a year and.
Well, right. We're not going to get into the discussion here, but.
Of course.
Lori will reach out to, if you leave your contact information with.
Oh, I did.
Janelle, then Lori will be getting in touch with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ma'am.
All right. Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to speak about the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see item number seven pulled for discussion.
Seven, 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 seven. Okay. Yeah, we can do that. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Are there any items on the consent calendar that the city council would like to remove for separate discussion and possible action? Nope, seeing none. Okay, I'm going to close public comment now and ask for a motion on the items except item seven.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale. Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Let's talk about item seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven is the second reading for the adoption of the ordinance regarding the Citizens Oversight Committee. I did outline that at the next last meeting, so if there's a specific question that Mr. Plowski has, I'm happy to address that.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I wasn't here last meeting. I just want to know what the, what's being amended and that you guys are.
I'm happy to address that. So the first change was the members of the committee to tier it. The committee is now five members. The first three appointed will be in terms of three years, and the second two will be, their successors will be the full terms. And then the two additional ones will be two-year terms. And then going forward, those, those two-year terms will be the full, full term. And then also, it was changed from semi-annually meeting to quarterly meeting. And we've been doing that under Measure H, but this is just changing for clarity under the new Measure B.
It's open to public, Jim. The comment.
I know how much everybody looks forward to my comments.
Oh, no, it's always entertaining.
This rehash of the Oversight Committee, this was something that I went to over and over and over again prior to the drafting of this ordinance and the passage of Measure B. I just don't understand why it is that this Oversight Committee is not truly acting in an oversight manner. Why can't it be done the same as Planning Commission, whereby you bring the item to the Oversight Committee, they look it over, they scrutinize it, and then they, and then you move on with it? Doing it after the money is already spent is beyond stupid. I'm sorry, folks, but that's the way it is. And for this whole, you know, oversight thing, why it is that the oversight isn't as transparent as you're supposed to be, I don't get it. Is this that difficult to figure out? I don't understand. When it comes to openness and transparency, all of you electeds up here, you always talk about openness and transparency. Here's your example right here. Do it. The money being spent ahead of oversight, that's the cow getting out and then shutting the gate. Plain and simple. Can it be done? Sure it can. You're the council. You give direction. Do it. This is not difficult. This is easy stuff. Try it. You might just find out you like it.
Thank you. I will just say on that, though, the budget workshop is coming up on May 30th. The public has input into the budget at that point, and things that are budgeted under Measure B are discussed there, so that's a great time to bring your concerns forward too. So you, well, no, not really. It's kind of like a one-time deal.
Mayor, as well, we have a Measure H, our final Measure H meeting, which will be June 7th, and that will be going over the budget that's going to be presented as well and expenditure plan.
All righty, very good. Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council, unless there's anybody else that wants to speak. Okay. Gentlemen, your pleasure?
Can I ask a question before we move forward?
Certainly.
I'm going to turn off my light now. This is going to be for staff, so whomever can answer it. Just clarification, Oversight Committee is to pretty much oversee the funding that is spent, correct? Making sure that it's spent in the correct categories? Okay. So if this committee happens to find money was spent incorrectly, I understand that it's already been spent, but isn't it pulled then from the correct budget? So if something was purchased with Measure, we'll say Measure H funds incorrectly, Measure H would be reimbursed through the general fund or whatever category that should cover that item?
You are correct.
Okay.
I could also add to that too, if you'd like some more explanation. So at budget time, the items we are budgeting are mostly recurring items. So like large items like machinery and equipment, rents and leases, personnel. So all these expenses, you're going to see them happen monthly and recurring. Any, if there's anything new, you'd see it at budget time, or if there's a budget amendment later on. But other than that, the expenses will remain the same. We have rents and leases. We have personnel. We have, the smaller ones may be supplies, but you are correct as well. If something gets coded there incorrectly, we do correctly move it to the appropriate fund.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that the committee is doing what they're supposed to be doing then. Thank you.
I just want to address former Matt Price. Under your leadership, there were two meetings a year. This has increased to four, which is more transparency. It's not perfect, but it's getting better.
Okay.
With that, I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Ambries. Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So now we're on to the regular calendar. Our first item is, deals with accepting the city's audited financial statements and single audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. If staff could please present their report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So staff is bringing back for your acceptance the City of Atwater's audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022. I do have our auditor Ahmed Bedawi here in person, but prior to him speaking, I'd like to provide more detail on the audit itself and the importance of our audited financials. So the audit is important to establish a third-party licensed opinion on whether our financials are fairly stated in accordance to U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Our internal controls are evaluated. Our compliance with laws and contracts are also evaluated. In addition, the completed audit is important for our future funding, future grants or transportation funding. This is our second year with Bedawi, and I can speak on how detailed of an audit they conducted. It is a very extensive audit over multiple categories. So they look at accounts payable, accounts receivable, all our cash receipting, payroll, fixed assets. They require us to pull all the backup for these categories, a selection, and they review that in detail and confirm what we are posting is correct. In addition, they interview us and research what are our processes? Are there any checks and balances that need to be added? Are the current checks and balances correct for our future processes? So with that, the audit did find that there were no deficiencies in the internal control over financial reporting, which means no material weakness was found, was identified, which is a clean audit. And that's very good news for the City of Atwater, and it is for the previous fiscal year. But if you don't have any further questions for me, I can bring up our auditor Ahmed Bedawi to speak on this as well.
Council, have any questions?
Ahmed, you can come, yeah, thank you.
Please come forward.
Just make sure the mic is on as well, if you could tap it.
There you go.
I believe it's off now. Now it's off, yes. So you need to turn it right.
We need to put on and off.
Now it's on?
Now it's on, yes.
All right, it sounds the same, but that's okay. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me today. My name is Ahmed Bedawi. I was the audit partner for the City of Atwater. I know that I presented to you last meeting, and unfortunately, I made a very embarrassing mistake by using another city name. So I wanted to come in person and first apologize for that. I also wanted to clarify that even though not justifiable, it was purely a clerical error that really, no reflection on the audit quality at all. Like Delilah mentioned, the audit, we took about almost 400 hours in, in performing the audit. It involves a risk assessment phase that include interviews of city staff, evaluating policies and procedures that are in place, making sure city staff understand and follow those policies and procedures. And then based on that risk assessment, we sample from every account balance, from every type of transactions. We sample transactions. We look at the supporting documentation. We examine them. We send confirmations to third parties, attorneys, banks, ask them to confirm the balances outstanding and, and all of that. So we go through a very extensive process. And also, I wanted to give you some assurance. Why should you believe me in, in everything I'm saying? Is that we also go through an audit. That's how we maintain our license. We go through a peer review where another firm will, will come in and will do the same that we do to the city. They will examine our quality control systems. They will interview our staff, make sure that they're properly trained. They will also select some audit engagements and audit them and, and submit them to the AICPA and the California Board of Accountants, California Society of CPAs, and they approve our peer review. We provide that peer review to the city as part of our contract and part of our engagement. Since inception of our firm, we've always received a clean peer review. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of assurance that about the quality of the audit. So again, I wanted to come in person and just really apologize for that really embarrassing mistake. I know how it happened. No justification, but it did happen, so I wanted to say I'm sorry for that. But I also wanted to give you assurance that we really feel very strong that we did a very high-quality audit and that we appreciate the city staff and city's cooperation with us in going through this process. It can be extensive and sometimes stressful for, for some, but I think for the most part, it was, it was done well, and we appreciate it working with the city staff and appreciate the opportunity to provide service to the city. So with that, I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come again and clarify, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do any council members have any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for coming and, you know, presenting and explaining some things. And it was a very extensive and detailed audit, and I mean, something of this nature should be. So, but I appreciate you coming and, yeah.
Anybody else?
I wasn't here during your last presentation, but I did review the video, and it speaks the value for you to be here in person, not only for yourself, but for your company. So thank you very much for that.
And I would like to know, maybe not from you, maybe Delilah. So if we. So if we don't accept the audit, what are the consequences of that?
Can you hear me? I believe the acceptance of this audit is mostly for transparency. We have submitted, because we're required by deadlines, the data cannot change. What was posted, what was done at June 30th, 2022 cannot be changed. So it's more of a transparency acceptance from council of the audit.
Our professional standards do not require us to obtain an approval from the governing body just because we're supposed to be independent. We're supposed to provide an opinion on whether we feel the city has functioned the way it's supposed to function. So obviously, we can't get approval from the city. What if the opinion was negative and the city said, well, we're not going to approve it? So we are independent. So professional standards do not require us to get an approval. But of course, we follow our client process or policy. So a lot of our cities do require approval for their own internal purpose. And of course, we follow that. But there would be nothing for us to go back and redo if, for example, the city council decide not to.
Mr. Kale?
Like Mr. Button said, thank you for coming in today. Our policy is accepted, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you again.
And just to clarify, we're not, we aren't approving the audit. We're accepting the audit. So we have to go into the dictionary and see what the difference on those words are. But yes, we're just accepting it. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing me to provide services.
Are we ready to make a motion?
A motion to approve?
Wait, no.
Oh, okay. I will not.
I'm not following my script. Darn it. Public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If so, please come forward for your three minutes. Okay, seeing nobody come forward. Now, would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Button, second by Raymond. Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Our next item is awarding professional services agreement to de novo planning group for the preparation of the comprehensive general plan update and master environmental impact report. Director Thompson?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm extremely happy to bring this item to your attention and for your consideration this evening. As most of you know, the City of Atwater last adopted a general plan in the year 2000. The general plan is a comprehensive planning tool that allows the state government, federal governments, to know that you have a game plan in order to how to run the city. The last general plan, as it was approved in the year 2000, was just four years after the base closure. So you can imagine the environment, the conditions, everything that involved the city. And we've grown and changed dramatically in a much, much different way than that last process. Typically, what happens under the general plan, as it is a required document by the state, is you get a little nice letter from Office of Planning and Research, OPR, from the state of California that says, hey, it's year eight, year nine. You probably need to start thinking about your general plan update again. Year 10, they send you a little less-nice letter saying you really need to get after it. Well, the city was not prepared. And I want to give special notice or recognition to this council for having, and our city manager, for having the forethought three years ago to start stockpiling money for this process as it can be a very lengthy and expensive process to get this procedure done. Here's the risk. We don't update our general plan. We, although it currently doesn't violate a statute of the state, it does put us at risk for not receiving any funding. It does put us at risk from a litigation standpoint. It does not allow us to operate and set goals and achieve them throughout the city from transportation, housing, parks and open space, every other part of the general plan. We went through a very extensive request for proposal process. We published our request. We were notified by several firms during that who had requests for information about what the city's process would be. We did have a respondent that was qualified to perform the work, that understood the nature of the proposal request. And we were very happy that the selection committee came up with their findings regarding de novo planning group. I have not had the pleasure of working with them here at the city before, but I have worked with de novo planning before in a previous occupation and have found the experience to be extremely good. And Ben Ritchie from de novo planning group is here tonight. If you'd like him to introduce himself and his company and about how he looks forward to working with the city.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Ben Ritchie. I'm one of the founding principals and owners of de novo planning group. I've been preparing general plans for 20-plus years now. We started the company coming up on our 15-year anniversary. We've had the opportunity to work all throughout the state of California. A lot of work up and down the Central Valley, north and south. President and CEO of the company. I lead our general plan practice group. I will be hands-on from start to finish. You're going to see my face at all the public workshops, the public meetings. I look forward to a lot of interaction here with the city council. As Greg mentioned, this is the exciting aspect of planning. We get to do SEQA, there's entitlement work, some of the stuff that goes into planning. But general plans are really where cities get to chart their own future, have a lot of self-determination. So our job is to really help you navigate through this process. There's a lot of nuances to state law, a lot of requirements that you're obligated to be consistent with, but yet a tremendous amount of leeway in terms of how it's going to work for the City of Atwater. So we're very much looking forward to working with the community, getting to know your residents, your citizens, your business owners, council, planning commission, staff. We've got a robust scope of work. There's going to be approximately three years of hands-on work with our project team. And we're going to really do everything in our power to leave you with a general plan that's going to meet your needs for the next 15 to 20 years. We're going to have an EIR in place that's going to provide a streamlining tool for the approval and review of subsequent development and infrastructure projects. And really, our job is to listen, need the toolkit that provides you with the document that you've told us that you want and need, and help you navigate through this pretty complex, tricky and technically detailed process. So our job is to listen and make sure we help get you where you want to go. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions and go from there.
Just want to bring to the council's attention, if you will, there are basically four working groups of the update process of the general plan. Ben's team will be instrumental in probably at least two of those groups. The one group, the contract award, is what we are seeking the recommendation tonight. And the breakdown of those working groups will be as the plan evolves and moves forward. It's going to be a very fluid process. As you can imagine, that long of a planning gap between the first, the last time it was done and the work that we're helping that Ben will be doing. But we will be updating you throughout that entire process. And we look forward very much to working with their team.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Mr. Raymond?
Mine's just more of a statement that I'm glad we're finally to this point. We've been working on it for a long time. I mean, I could look out into the audience, and I know Mrs. Dash and former Mayor Price and Adam Reed. We've been working on this for six years or more, trying to get to this point. And it's good to finally be here.
Anybody else? I looked through all your stuff here. I appreciate the fact that you have Spanish speakers on your team. That's good. You're going to reach out to the community and key community groups. You know, we have, you know, as I'm sure all Central Valley cities do, we have our pockets of low-income and disadvantaged communities. And I'm afraid that over the years, that they have not been invited to the table. And I want to make sure that they are invited to the table. Now, whether they choose to participate, it's on them. But they at least need the invitation to make you feel welcome, so.
Yes, sir. And we're going to provide a whole lot of platforms and opportunities for participation to try and find the right avenue that works for different groups.
Right, yeah, exactly. No, I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Any other questions? Oh, okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? So please come forward. Okay, so seeing nobody come forward. Would any council member like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale? Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now we're on to city manager reports and updates. Item 10. Amending the City of Atwater Classification Plan relating to Deputy City Manager slash Community Development Director, adopting salary schedule E23, and approving Deputy City Manager slash Community Development Director and the Police Chief Employment Agreements. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you tonight, I have two agreements that I'm very happy to bring to you. When I became city manager, we had work to do to get a cohesive, strong management team put together and move some of these projects forward. I think tonight, you saw some of the results with the de novo group. This is an instrument that our community development director has been instrumental in bringing forth. We have a strong cohesive management team now in place in all of our departments. And before you tonight, we have three separate items. The staff report is all including them all together, but we'll take those individually. And you can ask questions separately or approve them all as presented. But speaking of the continuity, this council adopted a strategic plan that identified goal number 4.1, that to adjust the organizational structure as needed. Part of that organizational structure includes the appointment of a Deputy City Manager slash Community Development Director. That is the first agreement that I am presenting for you tonight. Both the police chief and the community development and deputy city manager positions are key management positions that are important and have shown their importance. But the Deputy City Manager, Community Development Director is instrumental in bringing forth items like we saw again, the general plan, transportation, infrastructure, as well as regional housing element. These are important factors that are, some of them, although they are not maybe identified as a want for the city, there are some items that are state-driven and that we have no control. Greg has been instrumental in moving these projects forward. And I'm happy to recommend his agreement tonight for approval as Deputy City Manager, Community Development Director position. He'll be instrumental in assisting me as a second and moving these, continuing to moving these projects forward. And the next item is our police chief. He's been with us for four years. His contract was entering his, sorry, chief, his expiration. And so tonight, before you, is a renewal of his contract as well. Chief has brought a level of professionalism to our police department that we can all be proud of. I think our community can be proud of as well. We, he's instituted new records management system during his tenure, as well as instilled accountability measures and promotional and training opportunities within the department, as well as continuing to upgrade the equipment to make sure our staff, our officers, our dispatchers all have the equipment that they need to do their job safely and to the best of their ability. So with that, I have both agreements. I'm happy to discuss those or take any questions.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Lori? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If so, please come forward for your three minutes.
Good evening, Linda Dash, Atwater. I didn't write this, so I didn't miss a word. I'm so happy that the city has enough funds for such a generous salary for our police chief. I'm really, really happy. And also very, very happy that we have a deputy city manager that's going to help Lori. When approving the lower-ranking officers, I hope you take into consideration their working conditions. 12-hour shifts, sometimes having to double back, missing lunch breaks, et cetera. Not always able to take a break for an iced tea at Brooks Ranch or elsewhere. The generous salary and benefits of the chief should be followed in making the same decision for our patrol officers, who make a lot of sacrifices. So please don't shut them down when they come to you. Let them know you appreciate them. What's good for the chief is good for the troops. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I'm glad that Greg is coming on board as deputy. I find it ironic that over the last three, four years, we've somehow seen the need to have to have a deputy. But, you know, for years, we were well-served without one. But you've done well here, Greg, and I'm proud of you. And thank you for coming on board. Well, with respect to the salary for the chief, and chief, this is business now. This is not you. The city is rewarding the chief with a pretty large salary. We're at critical staffing levels. We have no volunteer force. We've got several unsolved murders. And still, we're going to reward this? I appreciate the fact that you have brought the equipment and recognize the fact that upgrades needed to be made to facilities and what have you. But is that really what we're here to reward? If we're going to be fiscally responsible and we're going to bring the city in line with somebody else, doing, you know, I always hear this, well, other cities are this and that. I don't care about other cities. I only care about my city. And this city here, you know, to be 30,000 folks and to be putting out salaries like this, I'm sorry, but I just think it's a little over the top. No, I don't think it's a little over top. I think it's a lot over the top. And it's one of those things that, like Linda says, I guess we've got a lot of money here. Money that, I don't know where it's coming from. A new gas station going up? I don't think so. In any case, I know that you guys are going to rubber stamp this all the way through. It's just that I want to be on the record to let you know that myself and other citizens throughout this community, they're not happy with this type of expenditure. But you're going to rubber stamp it through. It's going to go 5-0. And chief, congratulations.
All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, council. I looked at this wage increase and nothing against you, chief. With this increase, he's going to be making approximately $12,000 more than the chief of police in Merced. Merced is three times the size of Atwater, four times the number of officers that this chief has to deal with. So I hope you guys really look at this because it's just not right. And I'm not saying he's not doing a good job, but I hope when the association comes for a raise, that you bring them up to $7,000 a month, like Merced PD is making. I hope you, when a lieutenant comes up, I hope that you increase his salary up to the same amount as Merced PD. I would rather see the $12,000, give or take, increase split up among the council people because I think the council people should be paid, in my opinion. At least that comes to $200, $200 a month for your gas, for everything that you guys do. I think that's more money well-spent, is made. Bringing back what we lost when times were tough, when the council lost everything and weren't getting benefit. I don't think the council should be getting like they were getting paid before and all these benefits. I don't agree with that. But I think they should be getting something for the time that they spent and the gas that they spent opposed. I would rather see this $12,000 going to you guys and to increase a wage above what Merced Police Chief is. and to increase a wage above what Merced Police Chief is making.
Thank you for your comments, all of you. Anybody else?
Hello, good evening. Adam Reed. Actually, I wasn't even going to get up and talk on this. I was here about the general plan and I figured I'd wait till the end of the meeting. But, you know, everybody's got valid points, you know, because everybody can have their opinions. I don't know anything about the inner workings, like financially and stuff like that. Hopefully, there's going to be more money for officers, too. I mean, we've got Measure B now that passed, so hopefully, hopefully, there's more money for them. And I mean, talking to Chief, it sounds like he, you know, he's wanting to make, you know, get more officers and he's trying to fill those positions. But my experience with Police Chief, I talk to him frequently. Obviously, like I said, not about budgeting things, but about, you know, response times, you know, how many officers we've got, patrolling traffic concerns and stuff. And it... My opinion, it never seems to fall on deaf ears. He always seems to be very proactive, in my opinion. Again, I don't follow him around all day, but as a citizen, I think he's done a great job. So, I mean, the money-wise, I mean, you could call it a bonus, or I forgot what Jim called it. You could just also look at his retention, too. It's hard to fill these positions. What are we going to do if the Police Chief is... If we don't give him a fair amount from what other police stations or police departments are getting, I mean, we might lose him. I don't know. He hasn't talked to me about that at all, but I am fearful of that as a resident because what if we lose our top police officer? You know, just like any other position. If we lose the heads of the departments and stuff, they, you know, take a little bit of time to fill and it might be hard, and we can't even fill all of our patrol officer positions. So I appreciate everything the chief's done. Again, I don't know all the inner workings and stuff, but as a citizen, I know whenever... The couple of times I've called that I've had somebody knocking on my door at night that was spun out on drugs, they showed up within like a minute. You know, they were there and stuff, so the response times seemed good to me. So, I mean, I don't know. And then I guess I have to say, too, I'm glad that Greg's here. Obviously, you know, he's an asset for the city. He's been working hard on the general plan and other things, too. I mean, that department's come a long way. So, you know, people are developing again and stuff. I mean, there's a couple, a couple of things over there that, you know, some of the members of the council are aware of that I've brought up in that department. But as far as Greg's leadership and stuff, I think he does a great job. And I think he's working on, working on a lot of stuff over there, trying to get things done. I mean, look at all the... We've got like a couple million dollars in pedestrian improvement projects going on downtown. I don't know if everybody's seen, seen all that going on, but all those sidewalks and curbs and gutters and stuff are all being filled and, you know, residents are going to be able to walk on sidewalks and not have to worry about walking out in the roadway. So, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Name's Harold Caddish, Atwater. I'm standing to, in support of both of these gentlemen. Come to know both of them, both very capable people, building a good team within both of their organizations, and I'm proud to know them both. I can't speak on the fiscal impact of these positions, but I can speak to their competence. I think tonight was a great example of the camaraderie, the esprit de corps that the chief has built within his department, within his community, and I'm proud to know him. Proud to even potentially call him friend someday. So I just want to stand in support of both of those guys and appreciate what they do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
All right, Rich Miller, 334 Silva Drive, Pastor of Victory Baptist, 1280 Sierra Vista Street. I would like to echo what the two gentlemen before me said, Mr. Caddish and Mr. Reed. As far as the fiscal impact, that's where it goes to the staff to figure out, is it something we can do? Is it something we can't do? And obviously, as a council, that's your, your call to make. I believe that you have all the information in front of you. I would just point out that if you look at the two positions, according to the numbers that are there, they're separated by about $3,000, just under $3,000. And I think both positions are needed. I think both gentlemen are doing a fabulous job in their positions currently. I would just say this, that I've always said that we can't compare ourselves to other cities as well. I would say, though, that you can look at positions and compare positions. And while I appreciate Mr. Thompson and his position, this is no slight on him or his position. I don't know too many people that are getting on social media and throwing him under the bus and talking bad about the people that work for him very often, yet our law enforcement get that all the time. And so to make just about $3,000 plus benefits more for our Chief of Police, I don't think that's that much to sacrifice for all that our officers have to go through and especially the one who leads them. With that being said, I would say, just like the other men before me, that I respect both these men very well, very much, and that I think very highly of them. Mr. Thompson, I believe in the time I've been coming for the last four years, he knows what he's talking about, and when he doesn't, he talks so high that I can't... I believe he knows what he's talking about. Okay, so he convinces me when I don't know. And I believe that Mr. Thompson knows what he's doing and he's done a fabulous job. As far as the chief, same thing. Chief came in a couple of months after I started coming to city council meetings. And the thing that I would say about our chief is he's accessible. He's always been accessible. I don't know if there's a better chief out there for Atwater, but if there is, I don't know who it is. He's always been accessible to me as a resident, to me as a pastor, to our congregation, and I appreciate that. He's trying to do the best he can. Retaining officers is hard because there's other places that can offer more money and better benefits and things like that. But I believe that we have an excellent chief who's doing the best that he can with what he has. And he has a plan, I believe, to continue to try to make our city as safe as possible. And I would say this with the last 20 seconds I have. Our law enforcement face so many things. We heard it just a minute ago. Now they're supposed to know how to handle mental health. When I was growing up, they just had to know how to enforce the law. And so I stand behind these men 100%.
All right, thank you. Look, you got the buzzer before you even got up there.
I thought that was the buzzer to start. Good evening, Gabe Santos. As was mentioned by several others, I think we get what we pay for. These are investments in the city for both of these positions. I look at all of you and your key positions, that you're making wise decisions on these salaries and that we are retaining individuals to move our city forward. As we move into, you know, 2024 and beyond, we've got a lot of key factors here, as we've mentioned several times over the last year with Measure B and the approval of Measure B, which is a great accomplishment. But we also want to make sure that we're planning for all those key positions that are below these individuals as they come to you, as was mentioned previously, for those salaries. At one point in time, people were really fighting to come into the Police Department here at City of Atwater, and I'd like to see that again. And shortly, in the near future, we'll be coming forth with some additional public safety. And I'm really excited to see this city moving forward in the right direction. But again, biggest key point that I'd like to make is you get what you pay for and we're making investments in the City of Atwater. So I really hope that we can look at these positions, but then also maintain fiscal responsibility for our budget and what we have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so nobody else coming forward?
Mayor, may I just address, I've heard financial brought up a couple of times. I just want to make sure that the public knows this is a 7% for the chief's position. It's a 7%, about a 7% increase. It's not a reward. We don't, I don't rubber stamp increases or requests for increases to salary. We did a salary survey of our surrounding areas, and this salary is still below the 90% median for a police chief. But as we've been talking for the last couple of weeks about the recruitment and the retaining and recruitment and retention for the police officers, that position as chief is also going to be hard to recruit and retain as well. So I appreciate the statement that Gabe said, "You get what you pay for," and we are not rewarding. We are moving the city forward in a, what the community expects of our law enforcement.
So is there any further council comments, questions? Okay, so we have three motions to do, or we can accept the staff's recommendation and approve them all three in one motion. Whatever your pleasure is.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Ambries. Kale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Button?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty, now we're on to comments from the public.
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record. However, it is not required. Action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, we refer to staff and replace on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Under the Brown Act, members of the public are entitled to directly address the city council as a legislative body of the city, not other members of the public or staff. I'm now going to open the public comment, period. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Are there any members of the public inside the chambers who would like to speak? If so, please come to the podium now.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson and City Council. Cristhian Santos, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. I'd also like to extend congratulations to Ms. Anareya as an Officer Levi Crane. Our office would also like to take a moment to acknowledge that in a week's time, communities across the valley and the country will be observing National Peace Officers Memorial Day. We cannot thank our men and women in law enforcement enough for the service they provide for our community, especially those who sacrifice their lives in line of duty on our streets. The number one priority of our office is making sure our valley has access to abundant, clean water. Congressman Duarte was honored to join the California Water Alliance for their third annual "Is the Drought Really Over?" forum, and the conversation focused on the current state of California's water resources and the future of water management in this state. More water storage and infrastructure equals affordable housing, flood safety, and cheaper groceries for valley families. Regarding flood safety, we have been in constant communication with city and county stakeholders and irrigation districts up and down the valley to explore how their flood control apparatuses and waterways could potentially benefit from emergency cleanup permits issued by the Army Corps of Engineers or other federal agencies. Our office is excited to host the Merced County Association of Governments One Voice Delegation, including, I believe, City Manager Waterman and Mayor Nelson, this week in Washington, DC. And we look forward to listening to your concerns and seeing how we can partner in advocating for quality-of-life improving projects for the City of Atwater and Merced County. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for that information. Anybody else?
One more time. Well, the representative from Congressman Duarte's office just confirmed one thing that I was wondering about was the May One Voice is in full swing, and we're going to send two representatives to Washington, DC, once again, for a three-day junket to come back with a sack full of nothing. It's a lot of money from the taxpayers and it gets us nothing. If you want to go and talk to the congressman, I'm sure that when he is on recess from congressional sessions, you can probably find him sometime or make an appointment with him sometime and do the same thing without having to travel 3,000 miles to do it at the taxpayer's expense. So just leaving that out there. Once again, we're off and running, spending money that belongs to other people, but it doesn't matter. It's monopoly money here. No action yet taken on the graffiti abatement contract. You folks rubber stamp that through, $48,000 every year. Mayor Creighton, or now Mr. Creighton, he's got you guys by the tail, and you're getting $48,000 checks to him with regularity, with no termination date to that contract. Congratulations, Mr. Creighton. Lastly, you guys can go ahead into the closed session. You can give direction to Mr. Splendario, and you can tell him, go and make an appointment with Mr. Rains and get that Sam Joseph case around the table, get it settled, and get it done, and quit spending the city's money on a dead horse. It's well over a million dollars, and you guys have the power, the five of you have the power, to give direction to settle this damn thing and get it done. Why is that so hard? Why are you making this so hard? And why are you spending taxpayers' money so frivolously? For what? What is the end game? What is the goal? Tell us. Tell the public. It's our money. It isn't yours. Let us know.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, Council. I've talked to the chief several times. He told me that there were 22 officers and budgeted for 28. I don't know if tonight's officer makes it five openings. Okay, but what I'm trying to find out is we've been down six officers for some time, several, several months. And so I'm trying to figure out where that money, that savings for that, for those salaries and that benefit, did that money go back to Measure H? Where's the money from the savings of those six positions not being filled? And if it didn't go to, back to Measure H, I'd like to know why. Second thing, I don't know if you check your emails or not. I sent you an email over two weeks ago. I'm still waiting for a reply sent to the City of Atwater website or email. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Gabe Santos again. I just wanted to speak on the behalf of the Peace Officer Memorial. Next week, I know it's been mentioned already, but pulled some statistics. 2022, we had in the United States, 245 peace officer deaths. 12 of those were here in California. So I want to make sure we really reach out and thank our peace officers for doing what they do every day. Also wanted to make sure that I wish all of the mothers a Happy Mother's Day. It's coming up this Sunday, so Happy Mother's Day to everybody. And I want to leave that on a positive note. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Positivity spreads. Rich Miller, once again, want to invite all of you out one more time. Since we're two weeks away, at the end of that week where we are honoring law enforcement, our church, Victory Baptist, will be honoring local law enforcement. We'll be having one representative from the Atwater Police Department, one from the Merced Sheriff's Department, one from the California Highway Patrol, who will win our, or be recipients of our Hometown Hero Award for 2023. We've been doing this now, I want to say, six years, and excited about the recipients this year, being able to honor them. And even though it's hosted at our church, it is open to the public after the service. It starts, the service starts at 10:00 AM, and that's going to be on Sunday, the 21st. After the service, we'll be having a barbecue there on the property, hamburgers, hot dogs, and things, and everybody's invited to come. And once again, you know, my, my hope and prayer is that, number one, our law enforcement personnel will see that there are people in the community here that support them, but also to teach the next generation. I really think it's important that we help these young people see our law enforcement as heroes. And so that's why we do this every year. If we don't tell them and show them that these men and women are heroes, then they will believe all of the chatter that they hear out there in social media land and whatnot. So want to encourage you to come out and support these men and women who will be honored. Once again, that's Sunday, May 21st, starting at 10 o'clock. And the good thing, all the people of our church know that when we have guests like the chief, the pastor is short with his message. So I promise I won't keep you very long if you come.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Not too many people left in here. Okay. I am going to close public comment now. Now we're on to city council reports and updates. We'll start with Mr. Kale.
Well, we... Congratulations, Chief. Mr. Thomas, something. I also want to applaud... the, uh, city manager for putting, uh, together a superior group of, uh, directors and the city staff that work together towards, uh, continuing positive progress. And, uh, on a side note, uh, I've always, I've been a, uh, Merced Elks Lodge member for like 20 years. And on Saturday night, there's a, uh, a ritual that they go through when you become an Elks member that's very prominent, and it talks about, uh, brotherhood, fidelity, generosity, and law and order. And, uh, every year, the officers have to cite their speeches by memory. And, uh, when I was an officer, I was horrible, absolutely terrible at it. And so we never run. On Saturday night, this year's Corps of Officers run the Central District Ritual Contest. The first time in 37 years Merced won. So, I want to congratulate them. And I was, as I was saying, Saturday night, it's really sad that the leader of that group wasn't even born the last time we run it. So, congratulate, uh, to the Merced, uh, Elks Lodge officers. And they leave, uh, next week to go down to, uh, Palm Springs to compete in the state championship. So, good luck to them. So, that was important for me to acknowledge those people. And I think that's all I have. Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Those of you who aren't mothers, you are. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Button?
Uh, I just want to start with, uh, you know, thanking, um, some of the folks that come up here, and, um, you know, they have the, they're willing to have the awkward, uh, comment or conversation, at least during public comment, about some of these, uh, agenda items. Um, you know, it is easy to go along with something, right? That's why it's the phrase "go along," right? It just kind of seems like, you know, water flows, let's just keep going with the flow. Um, so, I, I do really appreciate when people come in, and that's one of the reasons why we have such a great community, is because we have folks that come in, and they're like, hey, I'm going to tell you how it is. And it's not, it's not personal, it's just business. And, um, to me, that's fantastic. Um, and, uh, you know, I know, I know, you know, I can, I think I can speak for everybody up here. We all listen, you know? Um, to me, you know, just personally, you know, I've always felt like one of the major things for me, being on council, was about stability, um, safety. Those are two big ones for me. Um, you know, the folks here in town, they voted to, um, pass a measure. Um, they're putting their trust in us. Um, and, uh, that, that, with that is going to come more stability. That's going to come more safety, you know? Um, people are going to feel like they can walk their dog at night with a little more safety. And, um, so, um, you know, I feel like we're definitely heading in that right direction. Um, I think more, more and more stability is coming. Uh, the general plan is just another key pillar to that as we move forward. So, um, but I just wanted to at least acknowledge, um, the folks that are willing to come up and have that conversation, um, or comment. Um, and I want to say congratulations to our chief and, uh, city planner. Yeah. Uh, May 24th, Atwater Elementary School District is going to have an art and photography showcase. Um, it's going to be at Veterans Park from 5:30 to 7:00. Um, and, uh, it's just going to be a great time to see some kids' art that they've submitted. Um, I don't think there's any award. It's just pretty much just to showcase some of their abilities and talents. So, if you guys ever want to, uh, see some good stuff, head out there. Um, and I think, you know, I think, uh, Councilmember Raymond and I, we got to get some kind of awards going here. We, I think we got to, him and I are going to have to brainstorm. We, uh, we got competition with, uh, which is a good competition. Um, there's a lot of good stuff happening in Atwater, so, um, but, uh, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ambries?
Well, today is a, a fine example of karma coming back to bite one in the butt. A couple of weeks ago, I gave heck to my employer during one of their, their board meetings about their mics not working, and look at what happened to me today. So, yes, karma is real, people. Um, and at the risk of sounding like a public service announcement, I, I do want to say one more thing about the presentation that I did this morning, or not this morning. Um, I've been thinking about it since this morning, but, uh, from earlier. So, suicide is a difficult topic to talk about, but it is an important one. So, for any of our residents out there, if you're struggling, and, uh, just know that you're not alone. Reach out to someone that you trust, talk to them about, uh, what you're going through, and it's okay to ask for help. Um, now to other serious matters, uh, again, congratulations to the three students on, uh, taking third place for their, their video. Um, congratulations to all the student athletes, even the ones that were not able to make it here tonight. Uh, you guys are making Atwater look good. Congratulations on, on your new contracts. I'm expecting a lot. Lot of reports. Other than that, you guys all enjoy Mother's Day. Make sure to take your wives out, your mothers out, uh, make them feel special, if you don't normally do that already.
Mr. Raymond?
I don't know why I'm always the bearer of bad news, but, uh, my dad used to always tell me that the dolder you get, the more friends you put in the ground. And just before I got here, uh, Kevin Guthrie, mutual friend of ours, Jim, reached out and said that, uh, Steve Ardoine passed away. Uh, if those of you that don't know Steve, he's a great man, uh, Vietnam War vet, who gave every Sunday for the last 40 years to kids with baseball. Go out and teach them how to pitch, teach them how to catch, teach them how to, you know, hit. And he was always under the radar, but he's a great guy, and he's going to be sorely missed. Um, with that, I hope everyone, um, every mother out there has a Happy Mother's Day, and that's it.
Okay. I said most of what I wanted to say about the police department earlier, but there's a few other things. Um, I did find Sergeant Lee and Lieutenant Nowetsky to have a very high bar for professionalism, on their crew, anyway. I didn't go on any other shifts yet, but, um, that, yeah. Despite everything we see on social media about how bad APD is, it's not true. And that's why I say, if you have those kind of attitudes about our police department, then please go on a ride along and have your eyes opened. Unfortunately, I was also able to observe the firsthand troubles with the radio system. The portables are bad. I stayed in the car part of the time, you know, to let Sergeant do his thing, but, uh, you know, I kept hearing the dispatcher, hey, you guys, code four? You code four? You code four? And they can't even hear him out there. So, we're getting that addressed, thankfully. I want to thank the council for their support of that. And I think that is it. So, all have a good, uh, rest of your evening. See you in a couple weeks. Thank you. Thank you.